Testing, one, two.
Okay. Good evening. We'll call to order the city council meeting for Monday, March 3rd, 2025. Please rise to the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amanda.
Mark Pitterner.
Here.
Jan Derby, here. Bill LaClair.
Here.
Doug Brand.
Here.
Jan Petrie.
Here.
Farnesha Loomis, here. Pat Sackerson.
Here.
Darla LaClair.
Here.
Adam Huxley is out.
Okay, on to number four, consideration of any council member requests to participate in this meeting from a remote location. Tonight, Bill LaClair is joining us via phone, so we just need a motion in a second. Welcome in.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to allow Bill to participate via telephone.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Seeing nothing, this will be your roll of votes. Amanda.
Jan Derby.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Jan Petrie.
Aye.
Farnesha Loomis.
Aye.
Pat Sackerson.
Aye.
Darla LaClair.
Aye.
Mark Pitterner.
Aye.
Thank you all for that. Welcome, Bill. Is any city attorney on the line as well? Okay, thank you, welcome. We'll skip over number five because we have no public hearing tonight, and then we'll go to number six, input from the public. If anyone wishes to adjust the council, please step up. There's no podium here, so please just stand up and come close to the speaker. You don't have to stand in front of everybody. If you'd like to, please state your name and address for the record. Anyone for inputs from the public? Yes, sir. Wherever, right in the corners there, it's fine if you wish.
Alright, so my name is Adam Koche. I'm at 2540 45th Street. I brought some notes, just to make sure I stay on track. So, I just wanted to come here to bring up some billing inaccuracies that I noticed from the Department of Works. So, a little bit of backstory. Last month, I received an invoice dated for the 13th of February for snow removal in the amount of 71-72. There was no other information with that invoice, no line items or anything. And so, since the code 416 says that if the snow is not removed, City will bill the cost of such removal, I think there has to be a breakdown. So, I put in a records request, and I received kind of an interesting breakdown back. So, just kind of order of those items. I was charged for nine minutes each way for a total of 18 minutes for the staff member to drive to and from my address. Not only did I personally witness that staff member that did that hearing of my sidewalk, but my Ring camera also saw that they were only coming from across the street at 4504 Bellevue, did not take nine minutes. The next three items kind of relate to each other. The complaint came into City Hall, two and a half minutes, complaint gets entered, two and a half minutes, complaint gets forwarded about a minute. So, the issue with that is when I sent another records request asking for a copy of the complaint that included the complaining entity, date and time it was submitted or received, and supporting documentation such as the four photos, the response from Val at the City Manager's Office responded on 2/28 that the information I requested was not available. So, the line items, which is six minutes at $42 an hour, there's no substantiation that it took, but there's no photos for them to process. The next four items, the DPW staff member takes the before photos, staff downloads the pictures, the admin assistant takes the photos to create the invoice, and then the admin records the invoice with attachments, all totaling 36 minutes between $39, $33 an hour, and $42 an hour. If the city had indicated there are no photos available, and that is why they can't provide them in the response to my request, there should not be 36 minutes of handling time for these photos. And then the next one, which is kind of interesting, that I was charged three minutes for $42 an hour for the admin assistant to discuss the charges with me, or with the property owner as to why the work was performed. So, part of my initial record request on February 18th is I asked for the listing of all the properties that received snow removal invoice for the work completed on 1/15 for the snow event on 1/13. And the list showed 25 properties, mine is one of them, and they all have the same invoice amount. So, what this would mean is that it's assumed that the city, or it is assumed that all property owners have the exact same charges. They all were charged for 18 minutes of travel, processing of all of these photos, and that each property owner called and talked for exactly three minutes with the admin assistant. And I validated and reached out with some property owners on the list, and they in fact did not call them prior to the invoice being cut, excuse me, or at all. So, I guess kind of what I'm asking now is that since I'm here as a possible class of armed property owners, all 25 of the invoices from the 1/13 snow event with the work done fee on 1/15 that have charges that are unsubstantiated and found, I ask that all 25 invoices referencing, or that I've referenced so far, be refunded or canceled, and that there's a review of the DPW policies as to invoice generation be reviewed to ensure that issues like this do not arise in the future. Possibly another suggestion is rewarding the ordinance to put like a minimum in there. But as it's worried now, it's just add costs, and I don't think the costs are substantiated.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know that is something we'll be talking about at the Department of Works. Sorry, on Wednesday. So, that'll be something we'll be talking about. Anyone else? Input from the public? Okay, so now we'll go on to number seven, council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Anyone have anything? Yes, Mark.
We all received an email from a lady complimenting the personnel on the selection of the search agency and the process we're making for city manager. They also complimented us on sending out the survey to have the public input, getting the key components of what they think is important for the city manager. So, that was nice to hear from the community. And with that, I'd encourage all listening public citizens to please participate. Use that survey, fill it out, and help select your next city manager.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing else, we'll go on to number eight, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything? Yes, Mark.
I have two reports, committee on the aging, met this morning. Found out from participation in the meeting that Parks and Rec is hiring a number of seasonal workers. They need some people. I've heard many people in the community ask about jobs for teenagers. That might be a great opportunity and contact the Parks Department for a number of jobs there. Also, the Senior Center had a busy month in January and February. They had over, almost 600 rides for the trust car. They serve over 2,000 meals to our community, meals and things, so that was busy. And the school board reported that there's a big event coming up. LB Clark Middle School is going to put on a Allison Wonderland play at the high school, and that will be on March 6th, 7th, and 8th at 6:30. So, Allison Wonderland sounds like a great family event. I know these kids have worked hard, practicing for it. So, I'd encourage everyone to go. It's $8 at the door. Seven and under kids are free. So, please support Allison Wonderland. Okay, that's all. And then also, I want to mention the room tax, has a meeting this Wednesday at 12 o'clock, and that will be at the Cobblestone Hotel in the conference room.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you, everyone. On to number nine, city managers' reports.
Yes, there was an omission on tonight's agenda. That one's on me. Our police chief, Ben Minor, has a promotion with our, among our non-sworn, new community service officers introduced, and the new officer to swear in. The floor is yours, too.
All right, so I know I talked to many council members in the last couple council meetings about our staffing issues. I think we're finally there, so I wanted to introduce those people tonight. First off, I'd like to introduce Jody Miller. She was prior to us with the Manitoba County Sheriff's Department Correctional Staff for 13 years, four of which was at a supervisory level. Since then, she's been with our department as our community service officer, which I know there were some questions most recently at the listening sessions. I can't tell you how much she's done for our department. That's everything from animal complaints to garbage complaints, to you name it. Kind of a do everything position for our staff. And probably the busiest individual day to day that we really have, quite honestly. Deals with a lot of the most unreasonable people at times, but I think there's a lot of benefits to that job too, which I think she's passed on to our next staff. But with that, I'd like to introduce Jody Miller, again, our new clerical and evidence custodian. Though in most cases, people are ready to pass on the torch. In this case, Jody was just more excited to pass on her duty belt. She did so with Jessica Rogers, a Mishkot native, area resident currently in Manitoba. She has worked the last eight years with the National Guard, I believe just finishing up this last weekend with her final stay there. She had one deployment, and she reached the rank of sergeant. She's going to be our new CSO, doing all those duties that I'm sure you guys will be questioning quite a bit in the upcoming meetings. I'll be more than happy to tell you all about, but I think she's going to be a wonderful addition to our department. So, thank you. And then finally, we're actually going to be a plus one or so for a little while until we have an impending retirement. But that person will be Haley Thompson, who is a recent LTC graduate that I was happy to work with there at LTC. She's currently a dispatcher with some of her peers here in attendance. She's worked five years total experience with dispatch, also a prior two years with probation and parole. And now, and also counted to Rivers Fire Department, volunteer firefighter. With that, she's here, and she's going to be pinned officially by her daughter Allison. So, if Allison could come up? Allison, you want to just come stand by me? Your mouth's going to get smarten if you're going to eat there.
I, Haley Thompson, solemnly declare, solemnly declare that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, of the United States and the Constitution and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, of the State of Wisconsin. I will faithfully discharge, that I will faithfully discharge, should it be, it's a duty of part-time police officer, of part-time police officer, for the city of Rivers, for the city of Rivers, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability, to help the county, to help the county. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's you, you want to, that should be another 20 minutes, you know, I'm just kidding.
What do we do now?
Meeting is available on YouTube. We're going to check it out afterwards. They're pretty fascinating. My library director said he would dim the lights, so I'm not sure that's a good idea. People go to sleep when they're unbright. That's you in the back row there.
I'm over watching this.
Okay, city managers' report. The ice is quickly moving on the Twin Rivers, so thanks to whoever, to Joe Matson, our tourism director on that cover shot. You heard a bit about some new hires tonight, just in terms of staffing updates. The city manager position, there is the survey form out there. Council members, reminder, please return that to Public Administration Associates. The direct email address by Wednesday of this week. It's also out on Facebook, and we did have a couple of copies, I think, picked up at City Hall today, paper forms for the public. Public replies are due by Friday, March 7th, bring them by City Hall by the 11:30 closing time on Friday, if you would. We stand at 113 public responses on the survey thus far, so those will all be provided to Public Administration Associates to assist in their development of the position profile. We continue to look high and low for a new city planner and community development director in terms of a vacancy at the water utility for a certified water operator who is responsible for both plant operations and distribution system work. There is a conditional offer of employment that's been extended to the top finalists for that position. And also, in the instance of the lead facilities worker for parks and playgrounds in the Parks and Rec Department. Interviews were wrapped up last week by Parks and Rec staff, and a top candidate has been identified. So, in those last two positions, we hope at the next meeting to be able to announce new full-time employees and then get them in here and introduced at city council meeting. In the area of employee recognition, Mike, you want to speak to these? Mike Mathis, our Parks and Rec Director, two of his employees we focus on tonight for their professional accomplishments.
Jared Ror is our park maintenance supervisor for Parks and Recreation Department. So, he oversees our staff for all of our parks and all the physical facilities that we have. He went to a pretty in-depth, kind of two-year program that's put on by the National Recreation and Parks Association. So, he actually did two four-day retreats called Maintenance Management Institutes, and he had to pass a very rigorous test at the end of it, and he passed applying colors. All types of things were covered in the course, from maintenance planning, financial management, risk management, human resources stuff. You name it, they covered it. So, happy to have Jared to be able to complete that and continue to work with us. And then Marion Millian, she is a nutrition and volunteer coordinator for the Senior Center. So, Mary is the one that helps get all the meals out to people across the community and coordinates all the volunteers for doing those drop-offs as well. But Mary dedicated upon herself to get trained as a certified tax preparer through AARP and be a site coordinator for those tax preparations. So, there's a lot that goes into that. The feedback we got from a lot of Senior Center members was that a number of The feedback we got from a lot of senior center members was that a number of important taxpayers are no longer doing it. They retired this year, quite a few of them. And so there was a pretty big pool of people that had needed help getting their taxes done. So Mary did an excellent job. We did an internal award, we do an internal award, Parks and Rec Customer Champion Award. She made a lot of people's taxes really good for them, hopefully. So yeah, so thank you again, Mary, for all of the hard work and making that all fall out.
Thank you, Mike. I guess the next slide, really at the risk of being repetitious. This is a copy of the city manager survey, talking about qualities folks want to see in the new city manager and likewise what some priorities would be as far as experience. There were some open-ended questions, including the five top challenges or opportunities that folks see for the city of Two Rivers upcoming. Again, a reminder, if you have a paper survey, you can still pick those up at City Hall, customer service. Those need to be in by 11:30 on Friday. Online responses through the Survey Monkey app that we're using, due by end of the day, 5:00 PM on Friday, March 7. The reason we're meeting here at the library tonight, and again, thank you to Jeff Dawson and his staff for their hospitality and accommodating the meeting, is because most of the guts of the elevator at City Hall, that 32-year-old elevator that was put in as part of the City Hall renovation in 1993, is having all of its control systems, motors, hydraulics, and everything else replaced. Some of you have had sporadic rides in the elevator. Some of you have ended up in the default position in the basement where the doors open, leaving you to wonder, how the heck do I get out of here? That work is proceeding on schedule. While we definitely will have the March 17 city council meeting here at the library, hoping that whether the work session ends up being March 24 or March 31, which we'll talk about later, that we can get that meeting back to City Hall in our regular quarters. But this is a very much overdue project, about $120,000 investment in all of the working, essentially all of the working parts of the elevator that we depend on to assure handicap accessibility. It is kind of a new fitness regimen for those employees that work on the second, third floors at City Hall. Just would remind you, the spring election is not all that far away on Tuesday, April 1. Any pointers there, Amanda, or want to remind folks of?
Alex, you got us that. Last data registered online will be next week, Wednesday. So after that, we're going to come home, I'll start to book. And all of the math English actually going to start on Tuesday, the 8th.
Okay. Of course, we have five candidates on the ballot for the three at-large seats on city council. Also, it's on that election ballot. We aren't having to deal with it much this week. But just a reminder, as far as the ordinance requirements on snow and ice removal from sidewalks within 24 hours after the end of the snow event. I know the gentleman spoke during input from the public. We have heard from some other folks with questions and concerns about the ordinance and how it is administered and how the billings are done. That will be a subject, one of many, for the public works committee when they need. Help me out, that time, location on Wednesday? Okay, again, that's 5:30 in the COSCA room over at the Community House, or the Senior Center. It's still okay to park out in the street and Mother Nature seems to be with us on this one. Plus, the winter parking ban does come to an end on March 50. So we're less than two weeks out from the end of the winter parking ban, thanks to the folks that have cooperated when we do have snow, because it's good for both efficiency and safety to get those vehicles out in the streets. But the worst part of the winter is coming to an end and the end of the parking ban soon approaching. It is being held in abeyance right now as far as enforcement. Parks and Rec has a customer service survey out there. I'm going to call on Mike again, if you would, to speak to this.
Yeah, so we started a new survey. And the point of this is really to inform us on how we're doing in those interpersonal customer service interactions. So we've added this, a paper form, a QR code, and to all of our full-time staff's email signatures as well. So this isn't necessarily, well, it could be done to give us feedback about a park or something going on in a park. What we're really looking for is how did that front desk recreation clerk interact with you? How was that interaction? Was I timely in getting back to you about something that you're emailing me about or calling me about? So we've already gotten some nice data out of it. And a big piece of it is that a lot of the questions are on a scale of one to five. So then we can have some really solid data of what do we need to improve on? How do we move that 4.5 score up to a 5.0 score? So so far, we've had probably 14 people fill out. One small parks thing, they come up in the survey that somebody said, oh, there's no handicap accessible or potty have the Shoda Beach change somewhere. I'm like, oh, that's not right. We do one at Coast Guard and why aren't we doing that in the show? So we switched that up and got that figured out. But yes, the core of this is to help us continue to improve everything we're doing at Parks and Rec in our customer service.
Thank you, man. Good to see that customer service focus. The Two Rivers Utilities would remind folks that they are accepting applications for a scholarship program this year. The utilities award two $500 scholarships to area graduating high school seniors. You can get information on the city website under utilities. Deadline for applications is April 4. And to be eligible, the student, their parent, or legal guardian must be a customer of Two Rivers Utilities. We get a little territorial that way. But glad to provide that support to area graduates. Under community economic development, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. Later in the agenda, when we talk about facade grants, I want to give a little more in-depth report on what the city's been able to do with small business and facade grants in recent years. But a couple of projects were, no, we've seen throughout the winter. The expansion project taking place at Sobi's Auto Service. I happened to be in for an oil change on Friday and I just realized for the first time they're using those three-back bays now for service. Tom Christiansen said it's not quite photo-ready. Don't be sharing this on Facebook to the shining fours or. But really an outstanding addition, about a million-dollar investment by that longtime downtown anchor business. And we're happy to say that, again, is being assisted with $200,000 pay-as-you-go grant from TID number 12. Pay-as-you-go, meaning that payments are being made to the business on, will be made to the business on an annual basis, predicated on additional taxes generated from, as a result of their investment property. Also, out at the Woodland Industrial Park, we're looking forward to seeing construction later this spring for the new facility for Rush Logistics. Late last year, they purchased a two-acre site at the industrial park. Their plans were delivered about two weeks ago to the plan commission for a new 6,000-square building for that shipping expediting logistics firm, which is moving from leased space in Manitowoc to what will be this new facility on Brown's Drive at the Woodland Industrial Park. Look forward to welcoming them to the community. I mentioned earlier, the city council election on the April 1 ballot. There are two upcoming candidate forums that we're aware of. There might be another one in the offing, was recently contacted to our office at City Hall looking for candidate contacts. The League of Women Voters has a forum scheduled for this Thursday evening in the COSCA room at the Two Rivers Senior Center. Doors open at 6 o'clock. The forum begins at 6:30 and runs until 8:00 PM. We will be endeavoring to livestream the forum as we're doing with the next meeting. And then the Two Rivers Business Association on Tuesday, March 18, in the Community House this time, at the Behringer Room, will also be hosting a candidate forum. Doors open at 6:00 PM and that forum, again, begins at 6:30 and runs to 8 o'clock. So there are at least two opportunities in the weeks ahead to come and hear from the folks that are running for city council. And I expect to each have the opportunity to offer up questions, if you wish to. We'll be posting that on Facebook and reminding the community as best we can. Mr. Bittner mentioned this earlier, but LB Clark Middle School presents Allison Wonderland, March 6, 7, and 8, 6:30 PM, in the auditorium at a Two Rivers High School. $8 at the door for tickets. Children seven and under are free. So great evening family entertainment right here in TR. Whoa, didn't mean to skip over that one, Darla. Nimble fingers. The Environmental Advisory Board is presenting Keep Wildlife Wild next week, Thursday, March 13, 6:00 PM, here at the Lester Library. Is that down by the fireplace, Jeff?
It is.
Down by the fireplace, our east end, north end, I guess that is, the library. Darla, any comments as chair of the Environmental Advisory Board?
It's a really, really interesting topic. I talked to people and asked, you know, I came across a injured baby deer. You know, it just, they come across animals they don't know what to do with them. So Susan says she's really excited about this. She's got a lot of information for us. So when we, she'll tell us who we should contact. And just, you know, just discuss it should be taken if you come across injured animal.
Wildlife of Wisconsin advising on how to keep wildlife wild, especially if you encounter injured wildlife around home or in town. Thanks to the Environmental Advisory Board. Two Rivers Main Street, a downtown tradition this time of year, the great trivia contest on Friday, March 14, 6:00 to 9:30 PM over at the Community House Gym. Teams invited, up to 10 people per team. It's a cutthroat trivia competition, I can tell you that. There's nine questions in each round and the trivia is general. It's not TR-specific, so if any listeners out there aren't from Trivers, just because you can't say trivia without TR, doesn't mean you can't come in and compete. That was right off the top, pretty good. Yeah, I saw you like that one. So space is limited and it's always a good time. There's a cash bar available, which only makes the answers more accurate until the trivia contest. Again, you can contact the Two Rivers Main Street office either by phone or at their email address to reserve your spot. It's a great rock this fun evening in the gym. Thanks to Bill Rohr, these pictures just came in today. And I think we've all recognized that the rivers and our lake are mighty low this time of year. And these are some drone photos of areas along the west side of the East Twin River, areas up Adam Street and further upstream. So just kind of illustrates that in some cases, it's a fair amount of frozen mud right now off the end of people's docks. That's telling. Hopefully, we'll catch up on some crease if, see those water levels come back up. That, Mr. President, is my report for tonight. Thank you.
Anything to say, Mr. Governor, update?
Not at this point, other than we continue to watch with interest, you know, the executive orders and the actions relative to federal funding. Gosh, it's been over a month now since council authorized the contract for our shoreline planning initiative. We are keeping that activity on hold, pending a better definition of where we stay. Our belief that assistance for, from the safe drinking water loan program and the clean water fund program will be available for this summer's street project. We're still waiting for confirmation on our applications, our application for funding, which was scored very high, which would fund the scattered site lateral contract. Stay tuned on that one.
Thank you for that. On to number 10, consent agenda. Under A, we have presentation in minutes. We have two of those, the city council regular meeting from February 17, 2025, and the city council work session from February 24, 2025. Recommended action will be a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. And then under B, we have minutes of meetings. We have two, Personnel and Finance Committee from February 11, 2025, and the Business and Industrial Development Committee, Community Development Authority, from February 25, 2025. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. The recommended action for the consent agenda, a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bill. Second by Bonnie. Any council discussion? See, now this will be a voice vote, so how in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carried. On to number 11, council, city council formal items. Under A, we have a draft ordinance, amended section 6-4-9 of the municipal code, vendors from special vehicles to address vendor use of parking areas at the Shoda Park and Welshfield.
This one, instead of being in front of you for adoption tonight, is presented as a markup, a draft ordinance shown as a markup of the existing ordinance language, so the council can provide some feedback in the event there are changes desired before we put it in final form for action, I would expect at the next council meeting. This is something the Advisory Rec Board has worked on at a couple of meetings. This largely represents their work product, although I've hucked with it just a little bit between myself and I'll reserve the right to call on Mike Mathis if we can walk through it. This is a section, falls within a section of the code called vendors from special vehicles. Now, the focus of this is primarily on establishing a B and some ground rules for food trucks at the beach, but it falls under the broad heading of vendors from special vehicles, which does have an existing requirement that any such vendors register with the police department, as you see in section 6-4-9. A, they are direct sellers. This is a subcategory of direct seller. So, you know, in the old days, it might have been the encyclopedia salespeople or other folks. Maybe people trying to sell you a cable package or a fiber package that would come door-to-door. They are supposed to sign up as a direct seller with the police department for background, so that that background checks, what have you. But then beyond that, if it's vending from a vehicle, and this would be anything from the ice cream truck that used to wander around, or to food trucks at the beach or elsewhere, they have, in that instance, the vendors per section B have to have a current driver's license. Section C goes on to talk about insurance requirements for these vendors from special vehicles. No changes are proposed there. Moving on to D on the second page, or page 20 of your packet. Feel free to shout out or raise a hand if you want to interject here. This was just a suggestion I was thinking about right now. No vehicle used by a vendor can be operated for the purpose of sales prior to 10:00 AM. Oh, I don't know that I want somebody with their bells jingling from my neighborhood at 10:00 AM. On the other hand, if someone, say, is a coffee vendor or, and the, we're, you know, a lot of our downtown events, people are setting up and there's a vendor there that can serve them. Maybe that, that morning thing wouldn't be so bad. And propose right now, leaving the requirement that they operate no later than half an hour after sunset. Of course, there's the added provision here that the council can make exceptions for special events. So if you've got a big event at the beach that runs into the evening, say, it could go be like that. Item E, it was just limitations, so we've now broken it out. So E is limitations when it comes to vending from vehicles on the streets. F is limitation vending from vehicles in city parks. So on the streets, it would keep the general prohibition on vendors from vehicles on Washington Street downtown, 22nd from Forest over to its far east end of the Shoda Road, Pierce Street within the Shoda Park from 27th to Zlatnik, and 21st Street near the Shoda Park, Pierce Street, we have Pierce Street and Garfield. So that prohibition that's shown as stricken there under limitations is addressed elsewhere in the code. That's why that's stricken. Limitations under F of vending from vehicles in city parks generally would prohibit dispensing product without previous authorization from the Parks and Rec Director or at a special event as provided in the code. Moving on down in F, it does now provide for a seasonal permit from, applied. You can apply for a seasonal permit to vend from a vehicle from the Parks and Rec Director to park one vehicle and sell from that vehicle from an area designated for permit holders only in Lot 1 at the Shoda Beach. And I'm sorry, we didn't put a map in the packets, but Lot 1 is the southernmost lot. Mike, we're talking about the south end of the southernmost lot.
This morning, Mike told me about Lot 1 and the Shoda Beach. And as I understand it, you're going to mark off a special area of Lot 1 they can only park in. If possible, I'd like to see them service, so the lines are backing up into the park instead of in the parking. the parking lot area. I think it'd be safer. And you're going to limit it to two vehicles or just one?
Three.
Three. Is there enough space for that end, the parking such that premium at the beach?
There should be enough space for free in that area we're designating, but it's not, it's really personal for service. So, if you have a really huge truck, and you take up more space, it's kind of is what it is.
And that space is at the end, so they won't be crossing two parking lots like they have in the past, they'll be running perpendicular to the end of the parking lot. But that's a good plan, and that will help leave you some of the parking restrictions.
Mike want to back them off a little from the end of the lot? I hear what you're saying, you don't want lines filling up half of the parking lot. On the other hand, people with strollers, handicap folks, that sort of thing, you probably want to leave. Maybe that can be done by just scooting the vehicle as far north as possible.